Okay.
Looks like they're still connecting on way till they get fully in. All right, I would like to call the City of Fraser zoning border appeals meeting of June 3, 2021 to order. Please ask that you all join me in the pledge of allegiance. Somebody got a flag handy?
Yes.
There you go. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice.
Justice. For our. Very good.
All right, next item on the agenda is roll call if you would please take the roll.
Yes, member Burley.
Here.
Member Tremonti.
Here.
If I may.
Yes.
Since we're participating remotely.
Thank you.
Say participating remotely from the county and city and state from where they're attending from. Thank you.
Should we start again?
Please.
All right, member Burley.
Here from Fraser, Michigan.
Member Tremonti.
Here from Fraser, Michigan, McComb County.
Member Farina.
Here attending from McComb County, Fraser, Michigan.
Member Logan.
Here, McComb County, Fraser, Michigan.
And member Menendez.
I'm Menendez, McComb County, Fraser, Michigan.
And Chair Steinbeck.
Tending from Fraser, Michigan, McComb County. It is my understanding and belief that member Hunt will not be with us this evening. There are six members present which constitutes a quorum for conducting business. So moving on, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but with the amendment item number five A, appeal number two oh dash zero two should be.
Who won?
Appeal number twenty one dash zero two.
Second.
And motion by Menendez, second by Farina to approve the agenda for June 3 with the amendment of correcting the number on the appeal on item five A. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say, or excuse me, please, if you would, please take a roll call.
Yes, member Burley.
Yes.
Member Tremonti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yes.
And Chair Steinbeck.
Yes. I guess I should have read it prior to the start of the actual agenda, but I will at this time read the notice of virtual meetings. Which states that. Health and Human Services on May 6, 2021. Or excuse me, issued an order on May 6, 2021 that limits the indoor gatherings at non-residential venues. And the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity issued emergency rules regarding remote work by employees when feasible. In addition, the City of Fraser has declared a local state of emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. To ensure against violating the indoor gathering restrictions and in the interest of achieving the goal expressed by the MDHHS order. And the MDLEO rules to protect the public health. Particularly during a local state of emergency, the Fraser zoning board of appeals will meet electronically on June 3, 2021. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act using Zoom for video conferencing and public access. This notice is required to ensure that those wishing to observe and or participate in the meeting have the opportunity to do so. The public can participate via the Zoom application, internet access via the Zoom website. And or via telephone using the Zoom telephone number and meeting ID. The public will be able to hear the zoning board appeals member. Excuse me, members. And will be permitted to speak for up to five minutes during the public participation portions of the agenda. Please note that the callers or viewers will automatically be muted and must remain muted until called upon to speak by the chair. Written comments will be accepted prior to the date and time, no later than four thirty on the day of the meeting. By the building department at zoning@micityoffraser.com. Which is a method by which the members of the public may contact members of the public body to provide input or ask questions on any business that will come before the public body at the meeting. Public hearing comments will be heard during any public hearing that is conducted during the meeting. And other comments will be heard or reviewed during the public participation. In the event of a change in the status of the statewide or local states of emergency. The zoning board of appeals meeting may be changed from a remote meeting to a live in-person meeting to be held at Fraser City Hall. Thirty-three thousand Garfield Road, Fraser, Michigan, four eight oh two six. On the same date and at the same time. The city will post notice of any change in method of conducting the meeting from a remote meeting to an in-person live meeting. And or any change in the meeting place for this meeting. To the city's website at www.cifraser.mi.us. Interested parties should periodically check for such changes or contact the city clerk's office at telephone number five eight six two nine three thirty-one hundred. Pertinent information relating to the proposed variance request may be reviewed at the Fraser Building Department during regular business hours, which are eight AM to four thirty PM Monday through Friday. At the Fraser City Hall building at thirty-three thousand Garfield Road, Fraser, Michigan. Questions regarding the appeals may be directed to the planner care of the building department at five eight six two nine three thirty-one hundred, extension one five three. Written comments may be submitted to the Fraser Building Department at thirty-three thousand Garfield Road, Fraser, Michigan, four eight oh two six. Or by mail to the building by email to the building department at zoning@micityoffraser.com up to four thirty PM on the meeting date. That's last time I have to read that. All right. Sorry, and once again, I should have read that at the opening of the meeting after the pledge of allegiance, but failed to do so, but I believe we have covered everything appropriately. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Have we did that?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Your presence.
Next item on the agenda is more talking by the chair. Districts and members of the audience, the zoning board appeals as herein created is a body of limited powers. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Fraser code. The board shall have powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction. Structural changes in equipment or alteration of buildings or structures so that the spirit of the code shall be observed. Public safety secured and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all the following facts and conditions exist. First, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question. Or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. Second, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. Similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Third, that the authorizing of such a variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property. Will not materially impair the intent and purpose of the Fraser code or the public interest. And finally, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property. Or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or reoccurring in nature. As to make reasonably practicable the formulation of general regulation for such condition or situation. As noted on the roll call, we are missing one of our members this evening. It does take an affirmative vote of a majority of the board, so a minimum of four votes. To be able to obtain a variance. If a petitioner does wish to have their item postponed. To give them the opportunity of full board, please do so at the time when asked. And we will consider such a request. With all of that said and done. Next item on your agenda is item five A, old business appeal twenty one dash oh two. Various requests of best tires wall sign. But a various request of section thirty-two dash eighty-five dash two E of the Fraser zoning ordinance as it applies to wall signs in the industrial controlled zoning district. And the request is to obtain a variance from the zoning ordinance standard to exceed the building wall sign allowable by approximately twenty-eight square feet. Sixty square foot requested where thirty-two square feet are allowed. By show of hands, is there a representative of this item here this evening? And I'm just seeing a small group. Mr. Ray, are you here representing this item?
Yes, this is Mark from High Science.
Okay, you are the petitioner in this request?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind muting yourself for a second and we'll come back to you at the appropriate time. Mr. Reveal, if you'd give us a background information regarding this request.
Chair Steinbeck, if I will. But if I may.
I, I'm sorry, I can't see who was speaking. That was.
It was all right.
Okay, I'm sorry, if you, if you're going to do the presentation on this, or you had some other item.
Um, I, I'm not going to do the presentation, but before Mr. Erbiel begins his presentation, I have something to add considering that this case has been postponed from the previous meeting.
All right, go ahead.
Um, considering that a motion to deny was made and seconded at the last meeting. That should be dealt with first and foremost before Mr. Erbiel even gives an update or any more information. I, I would recommend that if the board wanted to consider any new information or any updates from Mr. Erbiel regarding this. That that motion and second and be withdrawn. And then that way, Mr. Erbiel can present any new information, the board can discuss that information, and then also the public hearing could be, could be opened up at that time.
All right, looking back at the minutes to see who was the maker and second of the motion. So the motion was made by Logan, seconded by Burley. Either of those gentlemen wish to speak at this time.
Well, yeah, I'll withdraw my support. To be able to hear what he, the new information he has.
Yeah, we have a withdrawal of support. Is there anyone else that wishes to support the motion of Mr. Logan? Recognizing no one wishes to support that motion therefore dies for lack of support. Does that suffice, Ms. Albert?
I believe that would suffice.
All right, Simon. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Reveal, if you'd give us any update on this request.
Uh, yes, thank you. The, um, as you know, at your last meeting, the board, board voted to postpone this request. By new generation signs for variance at three, 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 seven, three, three gross back highway. And that the reason for that postponement was to allow the applicant to confer with their client best tires on a total signage package proposed for the building. As you recall, the variance request was for the best tire sign. The main sign on the building, but there are two other signs, at least two other signs, plus signs in the window that have been installed. The applicant confirmed to the administration via email on May nineteenth that the intent of the variance request is to. Is as, as originally requested, which is to exceed the allowable area by approximately twenty feet. Sixty square feet requested and thirty square feet allowed. Which means that the request is for the best tires sign only. The applicant provided some more narrative and an application documenting their case as well as photos of. The site, which I believe that they would like to use to, to make their case to you. Those are enclosed with your packet. There was also a question last time about the dimensions of the finished master sign and the building on the. The adjacent building, and so we provided those in your packets. Otherwise, the facts remain the same.
Other questions for the administration regarding this request? Mr. Reveal, so the, the finished master sign, although it is on the, the same building adjacent tenant space, that, that really has no impact on the. Allowable signage on best tires. Is that accurate?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the administration? Hearing none, does the petitioner have anything they wish to add or update us on the, on the information provided for this evening's meeting? Mr. Ray, if you have two devices that are operating there, if you could mute one of them, that'll get rid of the feedback.
Can you hear us?
We just. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna unmute it real quick.
Very good.
Do we have audio from them? I, I, I didn't mean for them to mute altogether. It just sounded.
I just have to mute the PC because we have it connected to our phone. Just give me one second. Let me figure it out.
You're, the way you're at right now is fine, or was.
It's echoing. Just give me one minute if that's okay.
All right, I'll wait.
We're gonna have to use my phone.
That's fine.
Mr. Ray, there's a device signed in, a mark. If.
Who's Mark?
I believe Mark is sitting with Mr. Ray's. Um, so I don't know.
Okay, now. Just gonna have to use my phone for now.
Can you hear us?
Can hear you. Thank you.
Good.
So the, the question was, is there any information that you wish to provide to us to update us from the, either in addition to the information that was provided? To the office prior to this meeting or since our last meeting in May?
Well, Fadi, who we worked with from Fast Signs spoke with the client and they're aware of the additional signs on the building. And they have, they have agreed to remove those signs. With the exception of the sign that we're variancing, the main sixty square foot sign. They're gonna remove all the other signs, the window signs, I believe, and sign over the entry, that garage door, and they. They put an additional sign between the windows. We had nothing to do with those signs that were put out.
So those.
Clients agreed to remove them.
All right, so it's, it's my understanding from what you're telling me that those other signs. Such as the best tires with the phone number in between the windows. As well as the signage over the overhead door will be removed. Prior to the installation of the best tire sign that is up for consideration this evening. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and I, I found out that those signs were brought from her old location. On fourteen and Vandy, she just recently moved to this bigger location. That's where she got those signs I asked there.
So we did not install them.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the petitioners by the members of the board?
Then your hardship is what, sir?
Hardship, buddy. Well, one of the situations when we applied for this permit, we were under the impression that it was approved. There was a little bit of confusion with the new inspector at the city. We were given permit fees and said the plan review was approved. We were the impression that the sixty square foot sign was approved. And then I guess the inspector, the new inspector was confused on kind of approving it himself and so.
Sorry to interrupt. I believe a lady by the name of Jennifer that Mark was working with, she, she gave him a verbal approval. And she also sent him an email with the fees for the sign and electrical fees. And she, we were asked to go on BSA. And we were asked to go on, on the BSA, on the website. It was during COVID. I believe the was almost in April or May of last year. And we had a hard time. Submitting a payment, so we, we ended up sending a check. And the check was mailed to the City of Fraser and after, you know, the city found out that the sign was, you know, not approved and it was too big. The check was mailed back to us and it was never cashed. So we were under the assumption that the sign was, was approved and that's where all the confusion all started. In the grass.
You guys?
We know.
We, we can, I guess, I guess in, in response to Mr. Farina's question, that's. Information regarding potentially why the sign may be installed on the building without first obtaining a permit. But I believe as a question is, is why do you need sixty square feet of sign versus the twenty-eight square, or excuse me, the thirty-two square foot permitted?
Why do we do the sixty square foot sign with thirty-two? We thought, because we thought a sixty square foot sign would be allowed at the site.
You, you now know that that's not the case, so.
Not, not that we know. I, I went to the site, I took some photos and I believe Mark submitted all the pictures. From what you can see is the building is pushed, it's, it's pushed back and, you know, on, on grows back, I believe it's. If I'm not mistaken, honestly, maybe it's fifty miles per hour. And there's, you know, quite a few trees also that are. Possibly blocking the view. I think if you scroll down, you'll see there's, well, that one right across, the middle one is right. Covering the storefront. And if it's okay with you, if you can scroll down, you'll see it from the side also angle, it covers up. Also the store. And the visibility is not, is not that great. So we, you know, we believe, I think, sign, you know, if we can get it this, to keep the sign at that size will be very helpful. For the business owner, especially they moved from fourteen and Venday to this location so that they can. You know, have more space and.
Hopefully increase the business also.
Yeah.
And I don't think they want to trim those trees down and make it, you know, better visibility for the building and the signs. I think they want to leave the trees as is.
Mr. Freya, did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I, I understand what they're doing.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from the board? Now, I guess officially we opened and closed the public hearing at the last meeting. I, I don't see anyone else on the call that isn't either board member or staff or, or part of the representatives. Mr. Reveal, have we received any additional written comments regarding this item since the last meeting?
We have not.
Okay.
Mark, you shouldn't ask, ask Alyssa, but I think you should ask for any public to be heard anyway and close it if there's nobody there.
Well, we would have to open the public hearing to do that and we closed it at the last meeting. Ms. Albert, is that?
The public hearing was against the motion that died. So it's not against anything at this point, is it?
Well, it was against this request, I believe. Ms. Albert should answer this.
Yeah, Ms. Albert.
Mr. Steinbeck, I, I would just err on the side of caution and open and close the public hearing considering that new information was presented today. But that, that would be my answer.
All right, if there's no objection, I will open the public hearing regarding appeal number twenty-one dash oh two. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard regarding this item? Once again, this is appeal number twenty dash, excuse me, twenty-one dash oh two. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard?
Chair Steinbeck, I do not see anyone in the public on the meeting or in the waiting room.
Thank, thank you very much. Recognizing no one wished to be heard at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back up to the board.
Yeah, I've got a question for the petitioner.
Go ahead, Mr. Burley.
Um, you know, you're, you're, I guess, when you said the hardship is the trees. And you're showing me all these pictures of these trees and it wouldn't matter because you can't see the sign through the trees anyway. So even if you approved a bigger sign, you still can't see the sign. So I don't think that that's, you know, getting a bigger sign is helping your view with the trees in the way.
There's certain angles though where you do see the sign and the building. I mean, there are certain angles when you drive, you do see it.
And I, I also noticed too on your, the stanchion sign in front of the building where there's like spaces. We don't even have a sign where you're allowed to sign on the front.
Does she have, is her?
I mean. No, she, she's not on the monument, sorry. I believe because they were all taking, if I'm not mistaken. No, there's. Empty spot there. I. She, she never mentioned anything honestly about it, so I have no idea. But I, she just, the only thing we, she never mentioned anything. The only thing we. Originally requested was, was a sign and we, we didn't mean to, you know, make the sign this big, honestly, we. You know, we want ten percent of, you know, the storefront thinking, you know, the ten percent would be allowed for the most city is. So when we submitted the permit. Honestly, that's what it was, you know, approved and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to use that as an excuse. I'm just being honest. I. You know, we got an approval and we did it if, if, if we knew that was not allowed, I promise you, I would not be asking for a bigger sign. So there was a little bit of, you know, it was, it was a mistake on. You know, I don't know if you should say our end and also, you know, miscommunication, but. My goal was not to do something or break the rule or get anything that's not, you know, not allowed. But it was during COVID at the time and you can see the application. That was submitted. It was during, Mark, Mark, would you be able to check the date? I can give you the exact date fifty-one. On first one W sentence.
You found me for the cure. Last chip. Eleven nine twenty.
Sorry about that. I'm just looking through papers real quick. It was October, October fifth of twenty twenty. That's when it was submitted.
All right, are there other questions for the petitioner?
Well, just on my part. Alyssa, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but nowhere in state statutes are we allowed to consider COVID a hardship for a variance. We are allowed to consider setback to the road, size of the parcel, speed limit and that type of thing. But we're not allowed to take COVID in as a as a reason for hardship.
We understand that COVID, it was just, it just made things more difficult. We understand that, of course.
Okay.
And I guess to Mr. Burley's question, the the sign that is depicted in the photographs is the sixty square foot sign. It is not that they're looking to replace that sign with a larger one.
We're not following you on that.
Mr. Burley was commenting that you couldn't see the sign in the picture. So why would you want a larger one? And I guess my point that I was trying to make is that the sign in the pictures that you were referring to is in fact the sixty square foot sign. So it's not that you're looking to replace that one with a large.
No, this.
That is, that is the proposed sign.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions for the petitioner and I've already closed public hearing, it's at this point back up to the board. We're looking for a motion. Is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion. I guess I will move to approve appeal twenty one dash oh two variance request for best tires wall sign to allow a sixty square foot sign where thirty two square feet is allowed. The reasons the hardship is because of the speeds that are allotted now on gross spec and the setback from the road and the positioning of the building to the road. And I think one of the conditions is that all other signage on the building must be removed.
Yes, 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 yes.
And I'll second.
Um, Mr. Burley, were you the second on that?
Burley.
All right. So we have a motion by Farina, supported by Burley to approve appeal number twenty one dash oh two. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Uh, the chair would like to, I guess, add one, I guess, bit of information or maybe clarify with regard to the position of the building on the site would also note that this building is set back considerably farther back on the site than the building immediately to the south, which tends to hide the building from the traveling public, especially if you are heading northbound on gross spec because of that arrangement. I also want, I also want to clarify on the motion, Mr. Farina, you said that all other signage be removed from the building. And I guess I just want to be clear.
The best side.
That for this tenant space that we're not asking that the finished master sign or any other signage on other tenants on this building have to be removed as part of that motion. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
So.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
So is that okay if he, we add that to the motion, Mr. Burley?
Yes.
It's fine with me. Alyssa, is that okay?
That works for me, Mr. Farina.
All right. There's no other further discussion. Ms. Albright, if you do the roll call on this.
I will do the roll call.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmentin.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yes.
And Chair Stimek.
Yes. Motion has been approved. Your request has been approved. Now make your payment and pick up your permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the right side of the cart. And get rid of those other signs.
Yes, we will do that.
All right, next item on the agenda is new public hearings. I'm not aware of any new public hearings that are up for this evening. The next item on the agenda is new business. Item seven A, discussion regarding transition back to in-person meetings. Mr. Abiel, is this your item to discuss?
It is. And I I think it's just a request. This is actually Doc, Mr. Genault's suggestion. I see that he's on the meeting but muted, but as Mr. Genault has been monitoring the the Department of Health and Human Services orders and the state guidance on public meetings and on indoor gathering. And as you all know, things are shifting pretty rapidly. They are the the state is is moving towards rescinding indoor mask mandates the first of July. The city council is not yet, to my understanding, modified their stance about remote meetings. And there still is a state of emergency that exists in the city of Frager. So my understanding is that in if that, as long as that state of emergency exists, the board can continue to meet virtually until the end of the year. I I put this on the agenda just as a, I would like to request that the board email me individually and you can discuss it now if you'd like. But just sort of email me individually about your temperature, about returning. And we are doing it that way, just in case anyone has reservations and would not like to put them on the record or talk out in the open. But if there are certain situations where people have relatives that are immunocompromised or whatever, there are things like that. I I'm just trying to understand your appetite to return or your reservations about doing so. And I will definitely keep you posted as as city council acts and as the landscape of restrictions on gathering indoors changes.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. And I just want to clarify, when you said you wanted to take the temperature of the board, you're you're not talking about the the skin temperature in as a medical.
That's correct. That's correct. I figurative temperature about the board's appetite for returning in person.
The commission, he Paul talked about this last night, the planning commission also. And it was brought up that we should kind of wait and prepare ourselves, like Paul said, but not get in front of city council and they are the governing body and we should probably follow somewhat their lead, you know.
Uh, yeah, certainly, since since we're also talking about a state of emergency that's been declared within the city that is going to take precedent upon our wishes and desire and even with the the governor's order, the health department's orders potentially relaxing in-person meetings. We still are are potentially meeting within the building, which is governed by the the city of Fraser. And so we have to abide by those rules as well. So Mr. Bill, do you have potentially a timeline? As you mentioned, it is anticipated that the restrictions on indoor mask wearing and and meeting number restrictions are going to be modified probably as of July first. Do you anticipate, and this may be a dangerous question, but do you anticipate the Fraser City Council and or the mayor, I'm not sure officially who has the authority to declare or remove the state of emergency? Do you anticipate them acting prior to July first or at their first meeting after July first? What's what's the, your best guess?
I do not anticipate them acting before then. And I I guess I would ask my colleagues from the city's attorney's office if they have more information to help me out, but the the council has a virtual meeting, I think, I believe, two virtual meetings scheduled in June and has no plans to to change those meetings from virtual meetings. And as everyone has said, nothing is imminent because the state of emergency is still in place. I guess the the request is just to sort of understand when the board is ready to act and understand if if there are members of the board that would prefer for one reason or another to to stay virtual for a longer period.
Let me just ask, is there the potential? If there is a member of the board that is hesitant about meeting in person, can they participate individually, virtually?
I I believe not in the latest. I I believe there's a, there was a stipulation for that in one of the orders that was that was given, but I believe that that stipulation has been removed.
Okay. All right, just wanted to throw that out there. I didn't know if that was a possibility.
Question, sir, does Alyssa dial in though? Or Don?
Um, I believe our office has looked into this previously. I think that we are of the opinion that it could happen. However, technology kind of makes that a little bit dicey. I'm not sure that City Hall would have the capability to have someone be remote and then also everyone else in person. I don't think that the law would technically prohibit it. I just think that logistically, I'm not quite sure if we're there for the city.
I I, once again, I just wanted to potentially throw that out as a possibility. Since it may involve medical issues that people may not want to share in a public meeting, and I certainly understand that. And people may not want to share their medical background, their information at all. But Mr. Abiel, you you had asked us to try and have a a bit of contact with you with individual desires. Did you have a date that you wanted that done by?
Um, I do not have a date, but I would say if within the next two weeks would be sufficient.
All right. So just for members' purposes, why don't we say by the seventeenth of June, if if you could please provide Mr. Reveal with any information or comments that you have regarding any hesitancy to to meet in a in-person nature. We would appreciate that. And a.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
I see two hands up on the screens.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing any hands up. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking, I was looking for a real. Sorry about that.
Just a quick question. On the, in the chambers, a lot of places you've seen the plexiglass dividers and I I think the city added them within City Hall. Is that currently in place in the chambers or is it still open as usual?
Uh, the chambers exist, I think, as usual as they did before the pandemic.
Was there someone else that had a question?
Long. Your hands up, Bob.
I am not up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, maybe add a suggestion for the timeline of getting back to Paul. Maybe by June tenth, which is the next council meeting, then that way they can kind of give the temperature of this board. Just just a suggestion.
Okay, if if, once again, I I started off asking if there was a timeline, if June tenth is a more appropriate useful timeline to have that bit of information. Then I would ask, there's no penalty for that for that requirement. But if you would, please let Mr. Reveal know at your earliest convenience, hopefully before June tenth. Leave it at that. Is there any other discussion regarding that item? Seeing none. Now moving on to item eight, unfinished business of the board. I'm not aware of any unfinished business that is needs to be addressed by the board. Next item is planning commission liaison member report. Mr. Farina, do you have some fresh information?
Fresh information, yes, from last night. We had a meeting last night and the development in it's a thirty four, four thousand Utica Road, which is Hockeyland, you develop in the parking lot of Hockeyland. They came in for a a land use variance and were granted that variance. The they have modified their their layout. It was going to be two buildings, two retail outlets, a a restaurant and a, I believe it was a a frosty place or something like that, a shake place. And now it's just going to be a restaurant. And with they needed the use variance because they wanted a it it's they they said it is a drive-through, but it's a phone-in and a pickup window from your car in case they, you know, to make it more convenient for people. And on the other end of the building, there is an exterior dining area also on this building. All of the we made sure that all of the restrictions that were put on them before the redoing of the north parking lot, the fixing of all the fire things, the redoing of the resurfacing of all the entire parking lot and brought up to the to the city engineer who was on the call at that point that there have been water problems with that parking lot and that needs to be addressed in their their analysis, what's going on. This would actually reduce the amount of traffic flow coming out of that area for the super events, all of the things hoops that they had to jump through in order to get approvals are still in place. And the city has to approve it. They have to hire city for traffic enforcement and they have to go along with, the city must approve their plan prior to them doing it. So all that said, I I think it's an improvement on what was going to be there because it's it actually adds parking back into that area which which cuts down on the amount of traffic and to the out areas. And again, the parking agreements have to be registered and we we also added another thing that the the parking agreements had to be registered registered deeds and they must pay the attorney fees for the legal work that must go along, our attorney fees for the legal work that must go along with that. That was I think that came from Don and his staff and I think it's a good, good thing. So that that is the intent of what we did. And the other thing that brought up on the site plan for Taco Bell. If any of you are familiar with that, you you pull into the Myers area and the Taco Bell headlights hit you and headlights the other way hit you. And a requirement on the the site plan was that they put up a brakes to stop the glare of headlights and the oncoming traffic. I noted that that was not done. Mr. Ergo said, looked into it and found that, yes, that is a requirement. And he's gone back to them and they're working that. My my question. My, my question then was, why does this, this is the second occasion I've been involved with where this has happened. How is the planners and the building department going to work together to, so that this doesn't happen again? We shouldn't be relying on volunteer help to, to police what happens with the buildings and occupancy, giving them a permanent occupancy and temporary occupancy. So that was the extent of our meeting. Well, did I leave anything out?
I think you covered it.
All right, so are there any questions on that?
Well, I guess I, I just want to clarify, you, you, you said you granted a variance regarding the Hockeyland site and my presumption is that what you really meant to say was you granted a special use approval.
Yes, sir.
Unless, unless the planning commission has gained some new powers since, since I've been serving on there. I don't think they have the authority for variances. And, and I guess, and you may have mentioned it, but the changes to the site plan either were, because they also appear before this body for a parking variance. So I presume the changes in the site plan either comported with that previously approved parking variance or reduced potentially the, the amount of the parking variance that.
Yes, it actually adds parking back into the area.
Okay, so I presume by that it reduced the, the numerical parking variance that was required. Correct. All right, thank you. Are there, are there any other questions for the planning committee liaison member? I see no hands and hear no voices. Next item on the agenda is public participation. At this time, I recognize no other members of the public at the meeting. But is there anyone that wishes to speak on an item on the agenda or off the agenda this evening?
Just like to, you know, the work, kind of, kind of giving Paul a couple of items and he gets back right, right away and he's very responsive and I appreciate that. I think, you know, we do need to get a little tighter in the building department over there and what how, how are they checking what's going on? But I'm sure we'll, we'll get there. Additionally, there is on the third Sunday of August, St. Malakas Church is going to have a one-day festival. And that that's a long overdue, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I think you're jumping ahead of an item, but, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't you ask me if I had any other comments with any other comments?
I said the public, I, I, you, you technically are a member of the public, but you're also a board member, which.
I am sorry.
That's all right.
Draw my comments.
No, well, you could, well, you get a chance to say it again, how about that? Anyway, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the May sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. For some reason, it seems like this normally occurs much earlier in the agenda than item eleven. But is there a motion on the minutes?
I can make a motion to prove the minutes.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Menendez, supported by Farina to approve the minutes of the May sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting as presented. Is there any comments on the minutes? I actually have one, item six in the minutes. It officially says appeal twenty-one dash zero twenty-one. I think that should be twenty-one dash zero one. And would make a I guess a motion to amend the minutes, correcting that number.
You want me to correct that motion?
You can do that or support my motion to correct, how about that?
I'll support your motion to correct.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the minutes by correcting the number on item six in the minutes. So any discussion on that motion?
Here's the mic. I did have one correction that I saw as well in item six B. It refers to thirty-two dash eight-five dash two dot D. I believe that that should be referring to thirty-two dash eight-five dash two dot E.
So you're talking about in the second paragraph from the bottom?
It'd be in the first paragraph and second paragraph, yep.
Oh, so in both locations, it should be an E as in Edward instead of a D as in David.
Correct, yes, that deals with the industrial district. The other citation deals with the commercial district.
And I would, if there's no objection from the second, or I would add that correction to my motion to approve as amended.
As Menendez.
All right, so, once again, on the motion to amend, making those three corrections noted. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none on the motion to amend, all those in favor, or excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Member Burley. Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yeah.
Member Sti, or, excuse me, Chair Stimek.
So remember, yes. All right, now on the main motion to approve as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, on the motion, roll call, please.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez. Chair Stimek.
Yes. So now on the agenda, we have a item twelve, which is members' comments and items of interest. Mr. Farina, did you want to, to recover anything that you did already?
No, sir. I, I'm sorry, I was, I actually had pulled up the planning commission. I was reading members' comments, you know, I didn't see. So, no, I'm all set, thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that has any items that they wish to discuss at this evening's meeting? Mr. Logan, I see a hand.
Yes, I just want to, some sad news, Kelly Dolan's dad, Hank passed away last Wednesday night. Just while, I didn't know if you guys knew that or not, but just want to pass that along.
And he's going to be a viewing on Saturday, correct?
Correct, Saturday at Walsh Funeral.
Mr. Logan, if you do have either specific details on the services and or if you could forward out a link to the other members, I would greatly appreciate it.
I sure will do that tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any other?
I had a quick question. Do we have, do we have any movement on the sign? Sign laws that dated back and was kind of paused and was going to be reviewed. Do we have any movement on that?
We, we are still working on I guess, from the planner's point of view, we are prepared to do that and, and are communicating the urgency. I, I think with the transition and city managers, we will resume the conversation when that transition has taken place. I've had conversation with Mr. Thompson about this and it's sort of in the, in our recommendations of things that should be accomplished in the coming year. But no, no actual progress yet.
All right, any other? Are you no other? Move on to item thirteen, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
My second.
A motion by Menendez, second by Chmenti to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, wait, do we need to, let's do a roll call, let's be consistent, I'm sorry.
Member Burley.
Yes.
Last, last night, the attorney said we did not need a roll call.
That's true. Member Chmenti.
Yes.
Member Farina.
Yes.
Member Logan.
Yes.
Member Menendez.
Yeah.
Chair Stimek.
Yes, and I, I apologize for that extra minute of time that it took to do that. All right, meeting is adjourned. I thank you all very much. Stay safe, enjoy the summer as much as we, do we know if we're going to have a meeting in July?
As of this moment, there is no, nothing on the, that would be on the agenda. There's no business currently.
Okay, have we reached the deadline date for the July meeting? Because it, it did the July meeting move from its original date? I have a calendar with me right now.
I don't believe it did. I actually do not have the calendar for me either, but the, the regular scheduled meeting would be the first, I believe.
Yes.
We have not, we have not reached.
And so I, I don't believe we moved that in our official calendar for the year, so. All right.
There's still a few more days before the notice deadline, but as of this moment, nothing that I'm aware of.
All right, very good. With that, everyone, have a great evening. Take care. Thank you for your service.